So you're good now?
Now I'm good, yes. Perfect, okay. Is everybody ready to start our training session?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. All right, first, I want to thank Amanda for getting this all figured out to allow me to appear remotely so I don't have to spread my flu germs to everybody. So tonight, what we have scheduled for our training session is a presentation about SECR. So what I'm going to do is I am going to share my screens. I have a little PowerPoint presentation available here. And let's see if I can get this onto presentation mode. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Is that other screen going to work on tonight?
No, it's not working.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
There we go. Okay. All right, so this is something that we talk about at almost every meeting. The State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SECR for short. I'll be going through just, you know, where it all came from, what the purpose of SECR is, and I've broken down the whole SECR process into seven steps that we'll be going through tonight with the 25 or so minutes that we have available. It's a lot to cover, so I'm going to start flying through this. There we go. All right, so what is SECR? It started in 1975. In 1975, the New York State Legislature adopted Article 8 of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law, which has now become known as SECR. A year later, the New York State DEC, the Department of Environmental Conservation, adopted the regulations that implement SECR, and that's at 6 NYCRR, Part 617. Those are the regulations that govern our SECR review for each project that we review that's subject to SECR. If you look at the Department of Environmental Conservation's website, if you just Google "SECR" and click on the DEC website that comes up, it is a literal treasure trove of information related to SECR. If you're a SECR nerd or geek like I am, it's, I mean, you could spend hours reviewing all of the information they have. They have flow charts, there's a SECR handbook that goes through sort of a question and answer style, you know, method for going through the SECR process and explaining what each step means. It's a really useful website and has a lot of good tools, so I encourage you to look there. But basically, what SECR does is it's a requirement for all state and local agencies to assess the environmental effects of a discretionary action, so an action that you have discretion to approve or deny, before you decide to approve that action. That is, unless the action is exempt from SECR, which we'll talk about in a moment. So the purpose of SECR is really to identify and consider environmental impacts of an action, to determine whether those actions have to be modified to avoid or mitigate adverse environmental impacts. So it really is, it's a process that results most times in a better project than what's initially proposed, through this process of modifying it to avoid or mitigate adverse environmental impacts. It's not the intent of SECR that every single environmental factor is the sole consideration in reviewing the action. Instead, SECR requires that environmental factors be balanced with social and economic considerations as well. The New York State Court of Appeals, the highest court in the state, has also said that the agency, and I'll quote here, "need not investigate every conceivable environmental problem. It may, within reasonable limits, use its discretion in selecting which ones are relevant." So it's really meant to be, and you'll see this in the SECR regulations if you read through them, this "rule of reason," quote-unquote "rule of reason," has been applied in the SECR regulations and in the courts to the SECR process. So how do we comply with SECR? Well, there's two ways, that, there's two things that you're going to want to look at when you're considering compliance with SECR. One, procedural, and the second substantive. Procedural is really just making sure you are strictly complying with each of the required steps in SECR. An example of this is, you know, I'm sure most of us are familiar with the fact that there are, there's this thing called the environmental assessment form, which all applicants submit with their applications. Well, there's a short version and a full version. The SECR regulations require that when you have a Type 1 action, so those are the actions that are more likely to result in a significant adverse impact, you are required to use the full environmental assessment form. You can't use the short for a Type 1 action. If a short environmental assessment form is used for a Type 1 action, then you have not strictly complied with SECR, their procedural requirements, and that determination can be overturned by the court if challenged. So that's an example of strict compliance with the procedures. Substantive compliance is a little bit more, harder to define, I'll say. And what substantive compliance refers to is that if your SECR determination is challenged, courts are going to look at whether the board took a quote-unquote "hard look" at the relevant environmental impacts and whether you made a reasoned elaboration for your determination. So there's a lot to unpack in that statement. So the relevant environmental concerns, those you have discretion to look at an application to determine what are the relevant environmental issues that we need to study here. You may have an application that does involve an impact to a wetland, but perhaps it's a negligible impact and it's not really of concern, but maybe that application does pose, you know, larger traffic issues or, you know, lighting issues. Those are the relevant environmental impacts that you're going to be studying, not necessarily the negligible wetland impact. So what does it mean to take a hard look? Well, this goes to how closely did you investigate that particular impact? Did you review an expert study? Not that an expert study has to be submitted for every application, but that certainly helps to demonstrate the board's hard look at the impact. You know, did the board ask questions of the applicant? Did the board ask questions of its consultants? You know, how deep did you really dig in to that issue? That's what the courts are going to be looking at. And then your reasoned elaboration, that's what we do every time that we prepare a SECR negative declaration for a project. That, you know, multiple-page document that's attached to the Part 3 of the EAF is your reasoned elaboration. That's where we go through each of those relevant environmental impacts that have been identified for the application, and we explain, here's why, you know, there were project modifications made that mitigated, you know, mitigated traffic impacts or mitigated stormwater impacts. These are, this is how the project was modified, and this is the information that the board has relied upon in its review to determine that there's no significant environmental impact that's going to result from the project. That is your reasoned elaboration. Now, this all, all of this goes to the importance of creating a good record for your review of an application. A record consists of everything that's before the board at the time it makes its decision. So that could include all of the information from the applicant, all public comments, whether in writing or verbal at a public hearing, memos from your consultants, memos from staff, for example, your building inspector, testimony at public meetings. All of that is packaged up into this thing called the record. And when a court is reviewing your determination and one challenge, that's the only thing the court is going to be permitted to look at. It cannot review information that's outside of that record. So that's why it's so important to make sure that your decision is documented, that you have, you know, what we call a rational basis in the record, that you can point to information, data, evidence in the record that supports your decision, because that's what the board is going, that's what, I'm sorry, that's what the court is going to be looking at. And looking at that information, the courts do treat expert opinion differently from my opinion. I think we touched upon this at the last meeting as well, our last training session. And a lot of times, this comes up, most often, when you're talking about traffic. And you can have a professional traffic engineer submit a traffic impact study that demonstrates that based on all of the IT standards and all of the data and studies that have been applied to the project, that, for example, a particular intersection is not going to have a decline in its level of service, so it's not going to have a significant adverse impact on that particular intersection. However, you could have a member of the public come up and say, "Well, wait a minute, that doesn't make sense based on my experience at that intersection at 3 o'clock or 4 o'clock in the afternoon." So the best way for the board, in that instance, to really demonstrate the hard look is to use that information from the member of the public to ask the applicant's consultant and ask the board's consultants, "Hey, wait a minute, was this information that the member of the public just brought up reviewed as part of this traffic impact study? What is your response to that?" But at the end of the day, the court is going to say that the board is bound to, to sort of listen to or rely upon the expert opinion over the lay opinion. And this is a very frustrating thing for many boards that I represent throughout the region. It's, but it's a fact that that's how the courts are going to look at that evidence. So moving on to the basic framework, because I know our time is starting to lean, we're going to go through seven basic steps to the SECR process. So when an application is first submitted, the first thing we're going to do is we classify the action. So we look at the environmental assessment form, we look at the, what's being proposed, and we determine is it Type 1, Type 2, or unlisted. Usually, this is done at the staff level. This is not usually something that the board is really charged with reviewing. Type 1 actions, and there's literally a list of these actions in the SECR regulations, are those that DEC has specifically identified as being more likely than not to result in a significant adverse environmental impact, requiring the preparation of an environmental impact statement. Type 2, again, there's another list within the SECR regulations of Type 2 actions, and those are the ones that DEC has categorically said, no matter where the project is located, whether it's in, you know, Westchester County, Dutchess County, Clinton County, wherever it is, these particular projects will not result in a significant adverse environmental impact. So for example, the construction of a single-family home is a Type 2 action. So no matter where a single-family home is constructed, that's not the kind of thing that is going to trigger the preparation of an environmental impact statement. Unlisted actions are literally just that. They're not in the Type 1 list, they're not in the Type 2 list, they are unlisted. And there's no presumption that's carried with an unlisted action that it will or will not result in a significant adverse environmental impact. So once we classify our action, the next step is to figure out, okay, well, who's going to be responsible for reviewing the environmental impacts of this project? And that's the lead agency. So when you have a Type 1 action, you are required to designate a lead agency for unlisted. You can do an uncoordinated review, which basically means that every agency that has any kind of approval authority over the project does their own SECR review of the whole project, not just the area within their jurisdiction, but the whole project. So usually, we coordinate and choose a lead agency. And that's what we do at the beginning of each project, where the board makes a motion to authorize circulation of notice of intent. So what the board is saying is that, you know, we, as planning board of the City Beacon, we want to be the lead agency to review the environmental impacts of this project, but we need to notify all of the other potential lead agencies, so all of the other boards and agencies, both within Beacon and outside of Beacon, that has authority over the projects. That could be DOT, DEC, you know, Dutchess County Department of Health, et cetera. And we circulate notice to each of those agencies that, hey, we're raising our hand, we want to be lead agency, and you have 30 days to tell us that you object and that you would rather be lead agency. Once those 30 days has passed, the planning board can become the lead agent. Step three, determining significance. This is probably the most important step of the SECR review. This is when you issue your negative declaration or positive declaration. And the question you're asking yourselves is, will the application result in one or more significant adverse environmental impacts? The answer is no. If there are no significant adverse environmental impacts, you issue your negative declaration. If the answer is, it may, there may be one or more significant impacts, that's when a positive declaration is triggered, which we'll talk about on the next slide, starts a whole other set of steps. Now, I think it's important, a couple of things about negative declarations. Many times, an application is modified during the course of the board's review, such that perhaps when it first came in, there may be one or more significant adverse impacts that could be identified, but the applicant voluntarily modifies the project or the quote-unquote "proposed" action such that there no longer is a significant adverse environmental impact. So for example, a project could have, you know, a reduction in density, or, you know, somehow reduced in size that could result in a negative declaration instead of a positive declaration. That's, more often than not, that's what we see, that there are project modifications that occur during the course of the application review that allows for the negative declaration. One kind of interesting point about the timing for a negative declaration, which I always find interesting, is the SECR regs do have a timeframe set forth for when a neg-dec should be issued, and that's 20 days after establishing lead agency. So if you think about it, you establish lead agency right at the beginning of the project. So 20 days after that is not, you know, not a lot of time to review. But the alternative is, or, when the lead agency receives all information it may reasonably need to make the determination of significance. So that's more often than not the triggering mechanism that boards use. 20 days after it's received, all the information it needs to make its determination. There was a course, a course, a case from 2005 that came out of the town of Marlborough, where the planning board took 853 days to issue a neg-dec. And the court said, "That's fine, you didn't violate SECR." The court said, and I'll quote, "In our view, the planning board, as the lead agency, painstakingly undertook to gather substantial data regarding the application, holding both public meetings and hearings, in order to receive and consider evidence from all interested parties. Following the expiration of the deadline for submissions, the board issued the neg-dec at its next regularly scheduled meeting. Thus, we conclude the determination was not untimely." So I always find that interesting, 853 days, I think that has to be a record. So with that, moving on to our next step. So if the board determines that there may be one or more significant adverse environmental impacts, it issues a positive declaration, which then triggers a requirement for preparing a draft environmental impact statement. Typically, that's prepared by the applicant and their representatives. Prior to preparing that DEIS, or draft environmental impact statement, you have to go through a scoping process. Scoping used to be voluntary, used to be optional before the 2019 SECR amendments, now it's required. And basically, what scoping is, is it's the process of creating a written document that outlines all of the issues that are going to be studied in the environmental impact statement. The purpose is really to narrow the scope of the issues that are going to be studied so you don't waste time, you know, focusing on issues that are not necessarily relevant or, you know, haven't been identified as significant. It's really supposed to focus only on those issues that are potentially significant and eliminate consideration of impacts that are irrelevant or insignificant. So there's a whole process for scoping. Typically, the applicant will submit a draft scope for review. The lead agency then circulates that scope to all of the other agencies with approval authority called involved agencies, solicits public comment. Sometimes there, many times, there are changes made to the scoping outline. Sometimes there's a public hearing process, but there should at least be some method of written public comment available. And then if the lead agency has not approved a final scoping document within 60 days after the applicant has submitted the draft scope, then the draft becomes the final. So that's important, that the lead agency act swiftly to make sure that any revisions that need to be made can be made. That period can be extended on mutual consent, and it's still important to get through that process swiftly. So the next step, once you have your scoping outline, which is essentially, you know, the table of contents for the impact statement, the applicant prepares the DEIS. So that's going to examine the nature and the extent of all the potentially significant adverse environmental impacts. Sort of the cornerstone of an EIS is really the consideration of alternatives. There's a section of the EIS where a number of, you know, alternatives to the proposed action need to be considered. One of those that has to be considered is the no-action alternative, so what would be the impacts if nothing happened, if this project just didn't exist? And typically, there's like a, you know, reduce size, alternative, reduce density, et cetera. So there's a process by which, after the applicant submits the, a draft environmental impact statement, the lead agency and its consultants will review that to determine whether it's complete. And in determining whether it's complete, you will check and see, was each of the items identified in the scoping outline, you know, studied and vetted to the, to the board's, to the lead agency's satisfaction? If it's complete, then the lead agency will deem it complete and schedule a public hearing on that draft environmental impact statement. After the public hearing, the next step is the preparation of the final environmental impact statement. Now, what's unique about the final environmental impact statement is that it will respond in writing to every question raised during the public hearing on the DEIS, whether that's, you know, testimony from the public at a public hearing, written comments from outside agencies. Every single one of those comments and questions are responded to in writing. Many times, this process does result in some project modifications, which are also analyzed in the FEIS. And then, as we, we have two minutes left here, the last step in the SECR process is preparation of a finding statement. The finding statement basically is the culmination of your environmental review. It provides a rationale for your decision and certifies that the alternative that is selected, whether it's the initial proposed action or one of the alternatives, is the action that avoids or minimizes the adverse environmental impacts to the maximum extent practicable. So it's really like, it's a balancing measure when you're, when you're preparing a finding statement and you're reviewing all of the information in your record for your environmental review, you're looking at all of the impacts of each of the alternatives, and you're determining which alternative, you know, really mitigates the environmental impacts in the maximum extent practicable, while also keeping in mind, you know, social and economic considerations as well. So that is your last step in the SECR process. I would ask for questions, but I know we're short on time, but I'm sure that we can, you know, follow up perhaps in January or in February and have a presentation on SECR again, because I know that this is something that's obviously relevant to almost every application that the planning board reviews, and it's always helpful to, you know, fully understand the process.
Thanks, Jenna, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, welcome, everybody. We're going to start this timely 7:30. Welcome members of the board and everyone else. First, I'd like to have a motion to accept the minutes from November with, were there any modifications?
Motion.
Motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to continue on with the first item on the agenda. Continued public hearing on application for special use permit and site plan approval hotel and event space, 1113 Walcott Avenue, submitted by Prophecy Theater LLC.
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, Taylor Palmer with the law firm of Cuddy &amp; Fader, on behalf of the applicant. I'm joined, as always, with R.A. Segal, the architect, Rich D'Andrea, our traffic consultant from Colliers Engineers, and Mike Bodendorf of Hudson Land Design, as well as the applicant Gavin Hecker. As the acting chair mentioned, we are before you for the continued review of our special permit and site plan application in connection with the hotel and accessory spaces. We were last before you on November 9th for the continued hearing, and then we, as we discussed, the applicant's further efforts to minimize and eliminate any potentially significant adverse environmental impacts for the project, which we've spent refining the project and has conveniently discussed with your council this evening, has further reduced the size and scope and scale of the projects significantly over the year-long process we've been reviewing it. Since our last meeting, we did submit a formal supplemental submission to you on November 29th. That included responses to the public, as well as the board and its consultants. Our refined management plan also delineates three tiers of proposed events, which we previously discussed, but we've characterized them so that they can be organized into specifics with hours of operation associated with those. There's Type A events that have a maximum capacity of 130 to 180, so those are the larger events. There's limited-capacity events, which are Type V events. Those have a capacity of less than 130. That relates to the operation with the cafe space. And then the Type C events, which are smaller functions, those with less than 80 attendees. So each of these incorporated a number of other proposed conditions or limits that restrict the hours of operation, the days of operation, the cafe service, seating arrangements, and of course, capacity. So each of those was designed to try and package those in a way that they could be conditioned to an approval. We also included several new parking reports, including a supplemental parking analysis, event queuing analysis, and our revised traffic and management plan. Rich will discuss those momentarily. They confirm that there is sufficient parking available in Tompkins Lot, the municipal lot, and the Beakman Lot to accommodate the anticipated parking demands under the largest project event categories, and of course, the distances to those locations. We also included updated information about the historic, excuse me, preservation and restoration efforts in the abandoned cemetery, which is based on our communications with the restoration experts recommended by the Beacon Historical, excuse me, Beacon Historical Society. So we reached out to try and find out what would be the appropriate measures to incorporate there. Those will include, but aren't limited to, cleaning up the premises to remove debris and fallen branches and dead trees, working with a specialist in native historic vegetation restoration to conduct an existing vegetation assessment and recommend how to manage those, assessing headstones and monuments to document the descriptions and the existing conditions on the premises, and conducting any landscape restoration prior to or after headstone restoration as appropriate. And of course, that's all going to be to consult or consort with Beacon Historical Society. So R.A., we'll also touch on momentarily some of the updates to the plans, which include privacy fencing, which were comments on the public, as well as chaining off of the cemetery trail after hours. While our landscape professional, Deborah Adamson, was unable to join us tonight, we've also included correspondence from her expressing her comprehensive vision to the landscaping plan for the project, and her meetings with neighbors to address some additional proposed landscaping along the property lines to ensure further privacy there. One other document that your council may be able to also highlight too, is that we've incorporated draft conditions for the project for the consideration. Again, much of the event management plan is designed to be just that, but we decided to also try and lay out potential conditions related to hours of operation, number of events and times of events, and of course, related to these three tiers of events that we generally discussed previously. So first, I'll turn to- So first, I'll turn to Rich, just to walk through some of the traffic details that were incorporated in our plans, and then I'll have R.A. speak to specifically the changes to the plans, including the fencing and the gating off. Thanks, Rich.
Good evening, Rich D'Andrea, Colliers Engineering and Design. So we had a couple, several updates of information that we provided in our November 23rd letter and the November 20th update to the traffic and parking management plan dated November 23rd also. I'm just going to touch on some of the highlights. So one of the things that came up, has come up specifically throughout, but more specifically at the last meeting, is the queuing and how that would be handled for drop-offs during the event drop-off and pickup period. So what we endeavored to do was do a specific queuing analysis, taking into account the amount of time that it would take for a person to pull up, drop off, people getting out of the car and move on, and how many cars we anticipate dropping off during that period. Based on that analysis, which was provided as an attachment to our November 23rd letter, we identified that the the average number of vehicles in the queue or in the system would be about four and a half vehicles, based on a 60-second per-vehicle drop-off time, which we actually think to be fairly conservative. Based on that, we had identified previously that we have about six to seven vehicles of queue storage length from the drop-off location to the intersection at 9D at the driveway. So we think that we can more than accommodate the queuing demand. The other thing that the queuing analysis provides for us is the probability that there are more than six vehicles in the queued system. What that analysis shows is approximately 24% probability of that occurring. If that was to occur, the traffic and parking management plan goes into strategies of how you would handle that. That's the reason for having a parking attendant posted at the intersection with 9D to direct that traffic to then move into a more of a two-lane drop-off operation that would be able to accommodate that additional queuing demand at that time. So based on that analysis, I think we've shown that we can accommodate the anticipated queuing. I don't know if you want me to go on, or if you want to ask any questions on that specifically?
Let's just go ahead.
Okay. The other item that we had discussed at the last meeting was about the parking data that we had previously collected at the various locations around the city that we're looking at, being that it was from around this time, more or less of 2021. So what we did was, we actually did some additional parking observations at various times on various days between November 10th and November 20th, so Thursday, November 10th through Sunday, November 20th, various times of day, to get an idea of the Tompkins Lot, the municipal lot, and on Beakman Street, what the utilization is right now. Based on that information, we did see a little bit more usage of specifically the Tompkins Lot and on Beakman Street. Based on that information, we adjusted what we had previously collected to account for the somewhat higher usage of those lots that's occurring right now. We then kind of updated the previous analyses that we had gone through, accounting for what we know now based on the event management plan, the number of employees and attendees that we're currently at, to identify what our overall parking demand is and what, compared to what our observed parking availability is. At the end of the day, what we basically identified was that we're going to, for a peak event, we're going to have an excess parking demand of between 60 and 75 vehicles, depending on the event and time of day. And then the observations that we identified show that on a Friday, we have between 120 and 180 spaces available in just those three locations. On a Saturday, 175-ish is more or less what's available throughout the day in those three parking locations. So we think there's more than sufficient availability in those three parking locations to accommodate the peak demand that we have. But obviously, we then have to provide other strategies to spread out the demand, use of other parking locations and things like that, to further spread out the parking demand, and not overtax those lots to whatever extent we can. And then, just to go into on the traffic and parking management plan updates, we added some discussion of how employee parking would be handled. And when I say employees, I mean event organizers, whatever staff for events, things like that, as well as, I think, based on a comment from your traffic consultant, how we would handle if there was a larger vehicle that needed to be parked during an event to support that event, that we would make special arrangements to have that parked in a location that's off-site, that we can control, that would not hinder the onsite operation during the event. So those are, I think, the key updates that we've made, and happy to answer any questions. Okay, I guess I'll pass to R.A.
Good evening, R.A. Segal. So there's a few minor changes to the fencing. The fence in the front yard on the north side of the property is four feet high per the Beacon zoning regulations, and then it becomes six feet high after that. We also changed the fence on the north side of the cemetery. So now it's a 42-inch-high fence just inside the existing stone wall, and that stone wall is going to be repaired all the way up. And then the other change that we had was, we changed the configuration of the top of the cemetery path, so it comes up to a stair, and that can be closed off with a chain and signage at the top and bottom. So that's really what changed on the site plan.
Thank you.
So I know that we still have an open public hearing, but just want to reemphasize that our changes are reflective of the board's comments and those from the public, trying to control or limit and restrict the hours of operation. We're hopeful we hear some feedback tonight, and certainly look forward to further comments and trying to, again, control and limit those, because this is not a everyday, large event. We've limited those events to the weekend times. We've limited the number of people. We've tried to be responsive to each of those concerns and considerations with respect to when these events will take place, what hours they'll be, and hopefully can further respond to any comments you all might have.
Thank you. Before I go to the public, I want to go to our professionals and come around the board.
I still have some parking concerns that specifically haven't answered the question about the Beacon Lot owned by the church, because we've previously approved that for multifamily housing. They haven't done it yet, but where does that stand? Is that lot still available? I've suggested, since parking is so precious on this site, they've put in four ADA spaces, so even if all the hotel guests don't need an ADA or don't qualify, they can't park on the site. So I suggested there's a way you can actually get another space in there without pushing the parking forward of the front plane of the hotel building. They can consider that. I pointed out that the special permit commission requires that the nature hours, intensity of the operation will not conflict with the existing permitted uses on adjacent lots, and that the strongest comments we've heard and the strongest potential disruptive elements is for late-night hours. So I've suggested that the board has the capability to restrict hours further than what the applicant would like as part of the special permit conditions. So you should be considering that. I'll report that the Sound Level Report was reviewed by the board's independent planning consultant, sound consultant, I guess it is. That letter just came out Sunday, so some people may have not seen it. It was pretty comprehensive. There's a lot of questions that have to be answered. So that's in the applicant's lap to review that letter and come back with solutions or answers to those questions. I'm still suggesting that a proposed centerline striping pattern be shown on the site plan. We know that DOT has the final, since it's a state road, final jurisdiction and approval of that, but we should have a preview of what the applicant is proposing for that left-turn lane situation where there has now two exits, or one entrance, one exit, two curb cuts. And I think the other ones are smaller items that we can, hopefully, we can be dealt with before the next round.
And we'll presumably provide written responses to those particular questions, and we may have some other, stay tuned, comments coming, but I'll let Rich just touch on one. I think it's the striping question.
Yeah, I just want to have a quick discussion on the striping question. So as it stands today, there's a two-way left-turn lane out there to allow for left turns into that driveway today. So I guess I want to just get an idea of what you're thinking is maybe the modification for the striping for the exit driveway. Is that really what you're looking for?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right now, there's a diagram of the light there that you can't cross.
Understood. Okay.
So we should, is two-way line extended up to the crosswalk or not? I don't know.
Right.
I think you should show what you're proposing to DOT in the long run.
Yeah, understood, okay. I just want to make sure that I was thinking of what you were thinking.
Okay.
On the plans, they have a note that lists the hours of operation, but it doesn't speak to holiday hours, holiday eve hours. I know that's a big concern of the hours. And I don't know if the applicant has considered reducing the late hours at all, possibly. I'll leave that up to you.
Stealing my secret talking points. Go ahead, sorry.
I apologize. Stormwater maintenance and easement agreements still needs to be prepared and submitted. They did prepare a SWIP. They have modified it. It does comply with DEC regulations. During construction, they will be doing further investigations to see if they can actually achieve infiltration out there for stormwater to help improve the system. We need some construction details added to the plans for the proposed 42-inch fence. I didn't see that anywhere on there. With regards to the vehicle traffic, tracking plan, I'd like to see the city of Beacon Fire Department trucks run through the site. The garbage truck maneuvering plan basically showed a Bluebird bus instead of an actual garbage truck. And then the box truck maneuvering plan, it appears from the tracking that you're actually clipping your landscaping and your trees in a turning movement, so that needs to be adjusted and looked at further.
Economical pruning, we call that.
And then there's some few other cleanups that they need to do on the plans.
Thank you. I'm going to the public. You could come up, identify yourself, comment. Appreciate it. And we're establishing a three-minute limit on the conversations. Out of respect to everybody, thank you.
Hey, Clark Gavitt, 2 Wilson Street. Good evening. I'd like to appear as an expert witness on the topic of highest and best use. As a retired general appraiser and the state licensed, I do so. And what I'd like to address specifically is the issues, again, of segmentation as it relates to, there was another project that we had lengthy conversation about, another historical one on the agenda today, but in this case, the bifurcation of the physical improvements to the land, also known as cemetery, and headstones. In real estate law, a fence is an improvement to land, and so would be a headstone. And the historical significance of the headstones has not been presented to the board for consideration, and I don't believe that the public hearing can be closed without the proper submission of the owners of the headstones from historical requirement in terms of, I go to council's instructions to the board earlier in the instruction session, where the use of adverse environmental impact in whole project, and of course, the cemetery part of the whole project. As for adverse environmental impact, I'd like to take it out to the economic context of the site. Let's call it a historical accident that the neighbors to either direction are residential complexes, relatively new, approved by the board. If Main Street Enterprise is important to the city and the city tax collection, so too must this site be considered in the context of its best remaining linkage with the train station. Particularly, this site could most conceivably economically cause some kind of mechanical conveyance system to the train station to Walcott Avenue with the proper creativity applied to the site, which comes to the topic of underinvestment of the site. And I think that there's remedies to make the current property owner whole and out of the project, or whole and still in the project. But I think the board should best refer to the city council for further discussion and opinion from the council as to whether or not we want to forego that best access to Main Street and commercial enterprise, and the tax dollars that could be collected from the private enterprise, and the loss of tax enterprise by the underinvestment what should really be a $60 million hotel site and not just a lucky real estate play that occurred for a couple million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Matt Bloom, I live at 30 Beakman Street, The View. Thank you to the board. Rather than repeat what's already been said and submitted in writing, I'd like to point out some of the more specious arguments Prophecy Theater has made during this process. I believe they not only highlight Prophecy Theater's lack of consideration for the community's concerns, they also demonstrate its lack of respect for the community's intelligence and sensibilities. Number one, they've suggested nearby residents have no legitimate right to worry about any noise that the Prophecy Theater events would make, since we already live near a church and a train station that also make noise. I can tell you the church does not make any noise other than its bell ringing briefly at 10:00 a.m. on Sunday mornings. The train station has existed and served the community since 1851. Anyone living in its vicinity was already fully aware of train noise, which is ambient, not disruptive, as the types emanating from Prophecy Theater would likely be. They've inferred those who are testing the project don't truly have a right to oppose it, because most of us are relative newcomers. What they're trying to do is create an old beacon versus new beacon dynamic. Reality is, regardless of how long they've existed, The View, River Ridge, the West End Lofts, and Hammond Plaza are residential buildings, which are entirely appropriate for this residential neighborhood, and happen to have been approved by this very board. Additionally, there are many residents of nearby streets, some of probably lived there for years, who have also expressed opposition to this project. They claim the parking situation for Prophecy Theater would be the same as what currently exists for the church, which doesn't really warrant a serious response. In their last version of their proposal, Prophecy Theater referred to the concerns of the neighboring residents as speculative, unsupported, anecdotal, and conclusory. If that's how they're treating us now, how are they going to treat us if their project is approved? The board had to commission an independent sound study, because the one Prophecy Theater had commissioned amazingly did not address exterior noise, only noise inside the venue. had commissioned amazingly did not address exterior noise, only noise inside the venue. The findings of the study, as you know, were quite damning, and they call into question what kind of neighbor Prophecy Theater will be if you permit them to be our neighbor. It seems our concerns are not so speculative, or unsupported, or anecdotal, or conclusory after all. Finally, it's worth noting that it seems the few people who have expressed support for this project don't live close enough to be impacted by it. And to be clear, I have no problem with anyone making a living, as long as it's not at my expense, my family's expense, or harmful to others. I very much appreciate that the planning board has been following their procedures and treating all parties involved with courtesy, respect, and fairness. That said, I request that you prioritize the concerns of the residential neighborhood over this commercial enterprise and consider bringing this process to a fair and proper conclusion. Either way, I and many others fully intend to oppose it for as long as we need to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public?
Hey, good evening. My name is Toby Hicks. I live at 7 River Ridge, adjacent to the proposed site. I'm both a resident and a board member, but my views and points would be the same in either situation. I'd like to speak about SECRAT intensity. If you would like to refer to the numbers or tables that I reference, they're in the document 113 Walcott River Ridge PDF in the appendix.
So if you don't mind, could you get closer to the mic?
Yep.
Or move the mic? Thank you.
So you're comfortable?
Yeah.
Thank you. So I may reference the appendix in 113 Walcott River Ridge, if you'd like to see it later. But, so regarding SECRAT intensity, we all look for numbers, number of people, hours of operation, number of cars. If you think about intensity as number of people times hours per day, times the days per year, you can look at this project as 200 times 365 times the full day. That is 75,000 per year. DIA brings in 65,000 to Duchess County from outside of Duchess County, and an incremental 35,000 inside Duchess County. This is almost at the level of intensity as DIA is, but in a small neighborhood area. The existing church has approximately 50 people in attendance at its congregation 52 weeks a year, and sometimes special events of 75 people, like a wedding, according to the current con, or prior congregation members. If you think about that intensity level, it's around 3,500, if you multiply those numbers. 3,500 compared to the current proposal, proposed by applicant of 70,000 is a 20x increase. 20x is a huge difference within a small community. If Beacon was 20 times larger, it would be the second largest city in New York State, larger than Buffalo or Rochester. Imagine that level of change within a local community. It's definitely violating the intensity part of the SECRAT questions, and I would urge you to issue a positive mention to it today, instead of allowing it through. I would also like to bring up a local comparison that Gavin himself did not reference, or the applicant did not reference. So he's referenced St. Rocco's and the Elk Lodge. Both of those, if you think about capacity, numbers of days a year, occupancy time, those are about 14% of his proposal. So once again, his proposal is huge as an accessory building. Finally, if you think about the Roundhouse, the Roundhouse has a 200-person event venue capacity with 40 rooms. This is a 30-room proposal with a 180-person capacity. The Roundhouse's ratio is six to one, sorry, the Roundhouse's ratio is five to one, 40 rooms to 200 people. This is ratio is 30 rooms to 180, six to one. So this is higher than Roundhouse as an accessory building to the church. As an accessory, I would expect the intensity to be lower, so perhaps four to one, a maximum capacity of 120 or less. But anyway, those are my points. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just want to quickly highlight, normally we don't respond directly to questions, and I'm the one that makes fun of myself most before your board about how I'm not good at math, but respectfully, the math that was just provided to you is misleading based on what is being proposed. The applicant is not proposing maximum of 180 persons every day of the week, 365 days of the year. Those are, we're limiting those events to weekends. We very explicitly detailed a plan of no more than 80 persons, again, to accommodate much smaller functions. The realities of this site are that Mondays and Tuesdays, you know, there, there is not likely to be many events at all. There's only to be smaller events and/or gatherings. The same is true of other events, which we classify as type B and type C. So just want to be clear that the hours of operation, the number of events that we're having, the maximum capacity that these events will have is not seven days a week, 365. We'll certainly respond to other comments in writing. I just want to be clear that that's not a correct characterization of what is capable, is being proposed for the site.
Thank you for clarification. Anybody else in the public? And I impose the three-minute rule. We've gone over it, and would respect if we can kind of stay in the three minutes for everybody. All right? Thank you.
Hi, Elliot Schriftman, 6 River Ridge Court. My presentation will go five minutes and 30 seconds, but others in the community have already agreed to yield to me. Thank you. Last week, in speaking with neighbors about what to say to this board tonight, many said the same thing, open with, "It's Groundhog Day," or "It's deja vu all over again." I have attended perhaps 10 meetings regarding Prophecy's application and spoke at three. I can safely say that the overwhelming majority of my residents in my community fear that we will be forced to continue to sit in on endless number of meetings, perhaps for the next year or more, because the applicant has been given carte blanche with respect to the number of times it can modify its proposals, with evident disregard for the planning board and its consultants, numerous cautions that what applicant seeks is not viable for so many reasons. The voices of the residents and the neighboring communities were heard here, too, on at least three occasions, also expressing grave concerns about Prophecy's utter disregard for what will take place outside the church before and after events being held there. It should now be patent to this board that we reasonably fear that when we stop coming, because we will feel that our appearances and statements will fall on deaf ears, the applicant will say, "You see, their lack of interest shows they are in accord with our proposal." Only this board, fulfilling its mandate, can prevent that wrong from happening. At the last planning board meeting, I spoke about hotel staffing to show you how, in my experience and opinion, and frankly, even those of the most frequent, infrequent travelers staying at a hotel, the applicant's projection of staffing needs is singularly disingenuous at best. I provided some copies of the relevant pages of the multi-employer collective bargaining agreement between the Hotel Trades Council, a major union in New York, and the small hotels, not the Hiltons, the Marriotts, the Sheridans, the small hotels in New Jersey and the outer boroughs, to be fair. And those are the persons in those classifications who are unionized, but there are managers, supervisors, and security guards that are not covered by the, by the collective bargaining agreement. I urge you to peruse these documents. If you conclude, as we have, that the applicant has knowingly provided this board with inaccurate representations about staffing, and we prefer to let you decide whether inaccuracy is a kind understatement, then, in any event, you must ask yourselves, if such is true for hotel staffing and parking, what else have they misrepresented that deserves a pejorative label? But aside from that, what is the real takeaway? Prophecy has no intention of building the hotel first, despite the fact that a conference center, which they are not really going to promote as such either, is supposed to be first and foremost an appendage or accessory to the hotel. While on the subject of supporting documents, at the first public hearing, I presented the board with copies of multiple views of Bayville, the music and events venue in Buffalo, New York, born from a church conversion accomplished by the musician Andy DeFranco. I was not allowed to finish my presentation because of time constraints. I will not ask you to open those pages now, but hope you will do so in the days ahead. Rather, I will ask you to retain my words, based on personal experience, that Bayville has more than ample parking on its own premises, and it is doubled by the adjacent municipal and office building parking, and that commercial enterprises surround the church, including restaurants and shops, and that it is widely separated from residential streets. Assuming without conceding that Bayville is the gold standard for such conversions, Prophecy can never be silver, bronze, or even brass. Indeed, nothing it plans to do on Walcott Avenue can even pretend to come to any fair comparison with Bayville. Some lawyers drawing on a now cliché metaphor will say in their closing statements or at other points during a trial, "When you don't have the facts, you plead the law, and when you don't have the law, you plead the facts. When you have neither, you pound the table." Well, good Mr. Palmer is too sharp of a lawyer, he's a veteran lawyer, to pound the table. But please understand that pounding the table is designed to the, to, to the ones empowered to reach findings and apply the law. It's a distraction. What, what he has done tantamount to a distraction is to repeatedly say, "We appreciate, we appreciate, we appreciate, we appreciate, we appreciate, we appreciate." In response to statements by members of this board or its expert challenging so many aspects of applicant's proposal regarding the number of attendees, parking, traffic, among many other deficiencies in their overall plan. Yet, when returning at the next meeting, there was palpable lack of appreciation, or at most cosmetic ones. And in my opinion, it clearly fails to manifest respect for the board and the neighboring communities anxious to see what appreciate actually means. And I'm not suggesting that he did it deliberately, but he could have prevented it by coming back with real statements of what appreciation meant. What we witness is a constant change of proposal set as like a moving target in a midway, and not truly grounded in response to your stated cautions. At one time, it appeared that they wanted the sun and three moons, so that giving up a moon or two, they could say, "See how reasonable we are? Now they want that all back and more, even if they claim otherwise."
Just so you know, I gave you a minute over your 52.
On the last sentence.
Okay.
Please see through this strategy and bring this matter to a smooth conclusion soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex Rivers. I live at 2 Academy Street. I've come and spoken a couple of times before. I'm directly across the street from the proposed plant Prophecy. I actually am in support of the project. I do see it as something that can be positive for the culture and the community of Beacon. I think a live music venue in some of the ways that it's been planned and talked about has been reduced in a way that actually makes it counter to what it was supposed to be in the first place, in order to have to be like a hotel and everything, where they're going to have to do more wedding venues and everything, because they have to bring the capacity of a performance space where we could have culture there, we could have the art there. But in order to make it work viably for them as a business, they have to compromise on that side of it and make it work, so that they have to have more of the wedding venues, which could be the problem of things, of the noise of the people around. I know other people in the neighborhood that live close to me that are in support of this project. I know, my, my wife has done similar work with these sort of projects, understands that the immediate impact that the community that lives right in the close vicinity have concerns about it, but ultimately, that these things can be good things for the community and help bring a lot of culture inside of it. I feel like it's easier for sometimes us, for us to rally and organize against things, and that's why maybe not seeing a lot of support of people who do support it in the community, who are in the neighborhood, who do live there, who will see their lives affected, come out, because it isn't as much of a thing to rally against as it is for easy for humans being to do sometimes. I just wanted, you know, come out one more time and show that people who live directly in, inside the neighborhood, who live directly across, do support it, and it's not just a singular voice against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public? Thank you.
Jane Vileys, Strathford Avenue. I'm a neighbor down the street from this proposal, and I don't support it. I think it's just going to bring more people, more problems, more traffic. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
So the number I read.
Reintroduce yourself again for the record.
My name is Toby Hicks. I live at 7 River Ridge, adjacent to the project. So I referenced a 200-person-per-day number, which was not only in the event venue, but the two other uses, the cafe and the hotel. If you add up the 60 people that will be in the hotel, plus the 50-ish in the cafe that are mentioned in the proposal, the total is over 200 per day, excluding staff and talent of 20-plus. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello.
Hi.
Kimberly Rodriguez, and I am at 12 River Ridge Court. We moved to the area about four years ago, and now we live at River Ridge Court. I just wanted to bring up, my husband is the fire chief over at Stewart Air Force Base, and during the discussions that we've had about this space, we had major concerns about the staffing at the hotel and the lack of staffing overnight, and the cause of concern for safety, emergencies, and I'm not sure if they have changed their plans on that, but to have nobody at the hotel from, was it 1:00 AM to 7:30 AM, seems like a major concern for not only that area, but the areas adjacent to it, if there's an emergency, a fire. And just the other night, we all went out of power, and I don't know what they would do at the hotel if power went out, if it's more of a Airbnb ran type of a deal, but with that many hotel rooms, that's very concerning. That's it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shelley Simmons-Bloom, 30 Beekman Street.
Did you make sure you get closer to the microphone?
Yeah, sure. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I was going to talk solely about the noise report that was submitted yesterday, but I do just want to address the 365 days a year, late hour operations. I understand that the applicant is saying that it will be restricted. I don't really see how it will be restricted if it has the potential of 365 days a year. I looked at the report, it's Friday, Saturday, holidays, holiday eves, and even other days of the week, it's still 10:30. So as far as I believe our, our community is concerned, that's way too late for us. But I did want to address the noise consultancies report, which we haven't really discussed tonight, and I hope that we have an opportunity to hear more discussion on that maybe in January. But we feel that, you know, this really is another, we've been privy to another example of Prophecy Theater's lack of care and due diligence in preparing their proposal. The noise consultancies detailed independent sound analysis report makes clear that there are profoundly challenging issues relating to sound levels, not just from inside the event space, but more importantly, outside. And what this is doing is it's clearly demonstrating just how inappropriate this proposal is for this residential area. For the record, this independent report confirms many of our deepest concerns that Prophecy Theater's sound level report chose not to address. We appreciate knowing that this expert analysis provides substance to our so-called speculative and anecdotal concerns that were referenced in, in the applicant's proposal last month. So on behalf of every concerned resident, I hope that the noise consultancies report and feedback validates our concerns once and for all, and that a decision can be made to close down this application and allow the residents of the community to move forward and live in peace. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, Andrew Bell, Verpontke Avenue. Just one more voice in full support of this project. I've been following it for a long time, and I think it'll be a great addition to Beacon.
Thank you.
Hi, Steve Jaffe, 8 River Ridge Court. I've asked this question several times, and I never really got a real answer, but the question, and I'll ask it again. How is it that 180-person-capacity entertainment venue, open 365 days a year, can be considered an accessory to a 30-room hotel? The city code clearly states that the hotel may have a conference center, not an event center, as an accessory, as long as the accessory use is an integral part of center, as an accessory as long as the accessory use is an integral part of running the hotel. Maybe when all this is done, I'll be able to get a straight answer to that, but I'd really like to have one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Rachel Riffkin, 10 River Ridge.
Get closer to the mic. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy, happy holidays, wishing everybody a healthy 2013. And my husband, he can't be here, but he did allow 30 minutes, three of his minutes of time to either myself or to my neighbor. So, that's where we got the five minutes.
Okay.
So...
Actually, six and a half, but that's who's counting.
So, I get two minutes?
You get your three.
I use it probably a minute just saying happy holidays. But I don't know how I stand here today, and we are still talking about the same issues. The applicant has said he's not a concert venue, but we are doing concerts. Applicant said no events will be taken on Mondays or Tuesdays, and now he has events on Mondays and Tuesdays. None of this makes sense. And we thought, when we saw the private acoustic report, that it clearly demonstrated the public's entire thing. But we will continue to sit here and do what we have to do. It just, he doesn't have a plan. It changes every day. And is the, I've asked for a proper hotel plan, because it's not to code. That was asked, that's what I was told, I have to ask that, right? So, will he get a proper hotel code? He needs a public bathroom. And I guess that's it. I think my, I forget how many minutes I allotted, but anyway, happy 2013, and please. That's it. Okay.
Thank you.
Positive review for SECR. I don't even know how you can even say that a special permit can be used. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
My name is Tom Herring. I live in the neighborhood for River Ridge Court. This is my first time attending one of these meetings. However, I have been following it closely. I've been talking, reading about it, I even watch it on YouTube, so I'm familiar with what is going on here, the tenor, and what everyone's position is. I am one of the authors of one of the petitions that was sent around to the neighborhood that received, I think it was 350 votes or signatures, that were opposed to the project. I also started a social media posting that had a fair number of engagements, forget the exact number, of which only one person was in favor of the project. I've lived in the area for about 11 years now, a little over. I'm in favor of economic growth, I'm in favor of culture, diversity, music, I'm a supporter of the arts, and I've seen Beacon rise from the ashes, basically, like 20, 25 years ago. And I think that's a credit to the planning board, either the people who are sitting here today, or your predecessors. And I think they've done, and you've done, a terrific job, almost to the point where it's a case study in how to take a town, a city, that was low-down and brought it right back up into prosperity. But I have to say that this project is not in parallel with what you have done historically. This is something that is totally different. We're taking a building that was intended to be in the neighborhood, to support the neighborhood, one or two days a week during the day, and we're totally changing around the function of the building in a way that is clearly very disturbing to the immediate neighborhood and people in the area. It just doesn't fit. Now, I just saw today the sound report, and I hope that you go through that with a fine-toothed comb, because I read through the entire report once, and it is extremely disturbing, the fact that we're gonna have to deal with this if this in fact goes through. So, there's a lot of details, I'm not gonna get into it in terms of what the reasons are for not doing this. I'm more of a big-picture macro person, but just looking at this as, from a macro perspective from 10,000 feet, it doesn't fit. I mean, it just doesn't fit for so many reasons, and I hope that you take that into account and that you respect the 350 signatures that we garnered and earned that also in favor of not having this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm gonna go around the board real quick for the board members, starting.
Okay, thanks, Randall. I had a number of questions and concerns. I just have been able to take a brief look at the acoustics report, but some of the comments resonate with me very much in terms of concerns about noise from departing guests, loadout of the event at the end of the evening, and in looking back at the Beacon noise ordinance, my reading was that, you know, 9 p., after 9:00 p.m. is considered nighttime hours. And there's a, and we should go through this if I've misinterpreted this, but in the noise ordinance, there's a paragraph or two on commercial facilities, and my reading of that was something to the effect, I can pull it up if I need to, but my reading of that was something to the effect of, you know, "Commercial establishment shall not produce noise that is plainly audible within a residence, a nearby residence with its, you know, doors and windows closed." And that's, that's a not, that particular was not a specifically like a DBA, you know, related concern, but to me seemed like a quality-of-life concern for a nearby residence, and I would be very interested in understanding how noise level from, you know, the departing event guests is gonna be controlled if it's expected to occur after 9 o'clock. And relevant to that, I think I had some difficulty kind of distilling the management plan into an easy-to-digest storyboard of how an event was gonna be conducted and what the timeframes were. And something that, if you want to just pass this to the floor of you for a second, there should be maybe three or four copies there if you pass them down.
Is that in the package?
No, this is something I made in an effort to kind of create and exhibit that if we agreed, or if our consultants agreed, that this was something that would be useful to...
Should provide a copy of this to the applicant also.
Yeah, if we just, if we all and our consultants agree that it's a useful thing. But what I tried to do was create a table that had a task list from the arrival of, you know, musicians, like the event load-in, through the point at which the cafe operation's closed to the public because you're transitioning over to an event, through the arrival of the parking management staff, the beginning, you know, the placement of signs and traffic control items, the point at which the guests begin to arrive, the event itself, and then the exact process in reverse. And what I did with this was set it up with one column for the task description, another column for the times, another column for the number of staff that would be present for each one of those items, and number of guests. And then I added a notes column for things like, you know, just the ability to make a comment about how different noise ordinances or other constraints come into play during these different tasks and timeframes. And I want, you know, like I said, if we, if we agreed that this was gonna be useful, I'd like to see the information in the management plan reconfigured into an exhibit like this so people can easily digest what's happening when, and it may cause us to be able to more easily look at, you know, what kind of constraints we really have and whether there need to be further adjustments to when things can occur in order to mitigate concerns and impacts. So, that's, that's kind of where I'm at in a nutshell. Thanks.
Thanks for taking an effort. I just want, for the record, for the members of the public, and for everyone else, in fairness to the applicant, we definitely have to understand what was given to us from the noise consultants, all right? It's new to everybody. So, no one here should expect that this board has had the ability to review this and respond it to, nor has the applicant. So, in all fairness, there has to be a sense of balance. I wanted to make sure that two reports doesn't create a delay compete on either side. There's things that have to happen, so.
And to the acting chairman's point, we will be providing with an expert's response to those comments, so we will be submitting that to you all for consideration, and then, of course, presumably some type of rebuttal or otherwise from the consultant. We're trying to make sure those are addressed. So, we're, we're not not addressing those comments, we work to address them. The purpose of the seeker and public hearing process is to identify other potential concerns. The board identified it, hired a consultant, and it's being reviewed, and we have to analyze that and implement it into our project to ensure it does mitigate any potential impacts. That's, that's part of the process.
Yeah, absolutely.
Working.
Yes, I had a few questions and concerns. I was trying to un...
Hold the mic a little closer to you.
And just while you're setting the microphone, Mr. Warner's comments, we are, we'll be certainly looking at what you've provided as a list, and we're also gonna be, we've heard the comments from Mr. Clark and had it in the letter, of course, those are also recent for today's meeting, which get put into the supplemental submission, will be, will be further modifying the proposed hours because it's, again, responsive to the noise ordinance and everything else. So, we're getting a lot that's coming in, and again, as Jennifer mentioned during the seeker review discussion before you all tonight, part of the process in seeker is to look at alternatives. So, what we've been doing is effectively showing you alternative proposals, which in our mind is reduced development proposals, and we'll be further reducing the hours of operation, but we'll explain that in a minute. Sorry, Ms. Kim.
No, that's fine. Thank you. I was trying, you know, I was reviewing the cafe management plan and the management of the overall site and trying to understand the capacity, site-wide capacity, and the intensity and usage with all of the various parts together. So, which I had to piece, you know, it wasn't something that was spelled out, but as far as I can tell from the numbers, on Wednesday through Sundays, holidays, holiday eves, there is 180 between the event and the cafe total. There are 22 staff members for the cafe and the event as the maximum is called out. I don't know what the capacity of the hotel is, but I'm assuming two people per room, and the staff, the overnight staff with one person is another 61, and then 10 additional production staff people that aren't related to prophecy. So, that brings us to 273 people, Wednesdays through Sundays, holidays, and then Mondays and Tuesdays, that number is slightly reduced to 205. So, I just, that's my understanding. I don't know if that, you know, comports with your numbers, but I think if we had an understanding, you know, a comprehensive understanding of how many people are gonna be on the site at a given time, that would be helpful to assess the intensity of use. I had a question on the staffing with the cafe in particular, which seems understaffed, you know, with two people. I don't know what kind of operation you're intending, but, you know, or four people at best with a 50-seat cafe seems thinly staffed. As far as the landscaping plan, I'd like to know if there was any assessment done on soil depth, because I understand when River Ridge was in construction, there was a plan to do a thicker tree barrier along the property line, the common property line, and they had to relocate trees due to shallow soil depth and bedrock there. So, that's a concern because it seems to be a primary barrier between, for the neighbors. And then with the parking, the new parking assessment, which I appreciate the update, I'm concerned about the Beekman Street assessment. It doesn't seem to have captured days commuter, higher commuter days, you know, with hybrid work. It seems most people are commuting midweek if they're commuting and going in person at all. So, it didn't seem to be that that was covered in the updated assessment. And I still am not clear how the traffic is going to be, the parking traffic is gonna be controlled to, you know, the places where you're ideally wanting people to go as opposed to, you know, the residential side streets, which are closer, a closer walk, and that, you know, the temporary signage seems to be, if you're having, you know, events for nights or four days of the week, it's not really temporary signage. It seems to be a rather permanent addition to the community, and I, you know, I think that imposition should be reconsidered. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Well, Len, thank you for putting together this spreadsheet. I haven't looked at it all, but it's...
It's just an example.
It's an example, and it shows the complexity, because this is actually just one portion of, this is a ATEC, a Type A event, right? So, the tables like this, they would extend to the other types of events, right? It's a very complicated, and it's a complicated, it's a complex management strategy, right? And it involves, it would require a lot of commitment and policing and other things in order to mitigate the sound and noise effects, some of which we can, we'll find out more about, obviously, when we get engineering reports on the acoustic impacts on environmental acoustics. But what we're finding out here is that this is a really complicated project, and...
The outside noise impacts that are referenced in the, in the most recent report, I don't know how you control those other than timing, because it's, you know, it's, it's the noise of the departing people, it's whether vehicles being used for loadout have backup alarms, and, you know, all of these items, and like I said, I haven't had a chance to go through it in detail.
Right.
But those things can't be controlled the way that you can control the inside, the building noise with, you know, baffles or window treatments or...
Right. And it has to do with the use and, you know, the person, you know, the applicant has a... This whole process is working out in order to find if there's a way to mitigate the impacts, right? That's, that's really the essence of what the process involves, if I'm not mistaken. And one of the things I'm concerned about is that we, is we keep the actual impacts, the real effects on human beings that are there, the environmental impacts in mind, and not get caught up in minutia of like, well, we changed, you know, we did this, we have a two-day, two days are excluded or whatever, but is that still going to, even is the progress that's made actually going to reduce the impact to an acceptable level? I guess that's what we're gonna have to find out. We're not there yet. There's a lot more information we have to get in order to come to a reasonable conclusion about that. I'm a little bit amazed at how complex this is, and also how the application has strayed from the, what I think the zoning intent was, because we're, the main use is a hotel use, and the main impacts are based upon an accessory use. So, I know that may not be part of the SECR process, but it's a concern that...
If we, I wanna keep our process because...
Just to make one really quick comment on that, I, you know, I spoke to Jennifer, I had a sidebar with Jennifer at one of the recent meetings, and asked about the accessory use decision, and I think I, you know, we should maybe just say for the public that as far as what Jennifer told me, it was very rigorously done, and it was documented, and while it may, you know, leave some members scratching their heads a bit, as far as the laws, and Jennifer said that they also looked at case law.
Jennifer's here.
Yeah, so if you wanna...
Well, I mean, that's what I said, I would like, I understand respectfully, let's keep this moving in a certain process, but...
Yeah, but that, that issue can be documented to the stakeholders and the public.
If Jennifer wants to speak on that, let Jennifer speak to it, because she's here. But...
Yeah, I can just say quickly, the building inspector did review that towards, gosh, like towards the beginning of the application submission, and there is a written determination on that, which I can recirculate to the board, and we can make it part of the public record again, but it was reviewed, sorry, my kids are, jump up into the video here.
We'd like to recognize this.
It was reviewed extensively by the building inspector in consultation with my office when the application was first submitted.
Could you please identify...
Could you please identify them for the record?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Honestly, what I was referring to was that that doesn't affect the SEACER process, actually. That has to do with the planning and other issues, and so the impacts are not, are the same, because the realities of what's being, what was done is the same.
Understand.
There you go.
Karen?
Wait.
Jill.
Jill, sorry, Jill.
Boy, I agree with a lot of the concerns expressed by my fellow board members, and have a few other little, little things to bring up, but the, my major concern really is how to make this work, which I'm sure is yours also. I like the idea of the project, and I don't think I'm going to be saying anything new here, but just as a marker of where I am with it, anyway. I like the idea of the project. It seems like the applicant keeps coming back with trying to change to make it fit in, and it's, but it's, I don't know if it's going to fit. I would be, I'm really interested in having a project that can make use of an historic building in a great location, that would be a fabulous asset to the community, and I think this proposal has the potential for that. I don't think it's there yet. But part of that has to be not alienating the immediate community of the four residential I don't know if you've had a meeting with them directly? Have you met with them directly? But I would be interested to hear, not right now, but maybe in comments submitted to Amanda, if anybody in the community has ideas about what they would like to see, you know, what would work for that, to make this an asset rather than a problem. So, with those general comments, I'm going to make one specific comment that, based on repeated personal experience, and that's, if you're counting on people parking on Beekman, it's just not going to happen, because they have to walk up the equivalent of six, six flights of stairs to get up there. And, you know, some people will do it, but it's not something you can count on. And in winter, somebody's going to have to, like, de-ice those stairs, and, you know, details like that, I, along with the other parking issues, so that's-
There's a lot more to be done. The pain we feel is the process, all right? I would say to the applicant, obviously, you've heard from the public, you've heard respectfully from the board, you've gotten the report, we're going to leave the public hearing open.
Excellent.
Because there's a lot of concerns I have, actually, after reading that, and really would like to see how you would address those.
Right.
Unless there's something else around the board, we'll see you next month.
As Mr. Trippman had said previously, I won't say I appreciate, but thank you for your comments. We are listening. It is being put into this project, and I can tell you, having discussed previously, coming into the meeting this evening, after hearing Mr. Clark's, or reviewing Mr. Clark's comments, we are already revising and updating the events, when they will take place, the hours of operation, we're already considering the reduction of the weekend events, which will be Friday and Saturday specifically, not including Sundays, or, and, you know, so while the public may say that we are not being responsive, we absolutely are. It's part of this process to try and get something to work in the site. It's a church. We're trying to adaptively reuse it, to preserve it, to restore it. Those are all what's proposed here. To be able to only use it one day a week is not really an effective adaptive reuse of that church space or the space itself. So, we hear the concerns, we're going to address the noise comments, we're going to put it into the matter, but I can tell you that part of that, you know, stay tuned message is, the hours for weekday events, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, are going to be reduced to 9:00 PM, and that was, again, in reviewing the noise ordinance, looking at Mr. Clark's comments, so those events would end at 9:00 PM. Again, not up to 180 people. These are reduced event size, scale. They're all identified in our tiering system and maybe tier plus with Mr. Warner's table to explain how those things function. The same would be true of the weekend events, which, again, would be limited to Friday and Saturday, not Sundays or holiday Sundays, to the effect of 10:00 PM being the maximum or the end time for those events for two days of the week we're talking about on the weekend. So, we're hearing it, we're already working to put that in, again, reflecting too of the noise comments yesterday from your consultant. We're bringing on a consultant to address those, and I just have Gavin, who has just a quick pause, and again, we appreciate all that we're doing.
Thank you.
Thanks, Taylor, and thank you, I'm Gavin Pecker. I just, I'm going to add a couple things here. I had a summary of what we were doing, but I'm going to bypass that, because we've, we've covered that. So, I just wanted to explain just a little bit about what we're saying in terms of our use capacity. This, some of the concern comes from just an attempt for us to be flexible, and not an attempt to maximize that, but that's, that's just, I guess, the kind of shuffling you have to do when you run this kind of space. So, as Taylor mentioned, we're going to limit that more, which also takes down our flexibility, but, which was what we were trying to do in the first place. So, I think that's all I wanted to explain about that, it's more about flexibility rather than maximizing. So, and once again, I wanted to thank everybody for coming here and we're, and listening to us, and taking the feedback from the neighbors and from us, and I think that what we're trying to accomplish here is something that all of Beacon can be proud of, and we want to work together to get this accomplished, and something that everybody can accept and be happy with. So, thanks a lot, and have a good evening.
Thank you, you too. Okay, guys, we're going to move on. Item number two on the agenda is postponed by the applicant. So, we're going to move on to item number three, continued review of application-
Randall, I'm sorry, it's Jennifer. Can I just, for the last application, the Walcott Avenue application, we're going to adjourn that to your January meeting, correct?
That's correct.
And what's the date of that January meeting? I just want to make sure we get the date on the record, the 10th, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, the 11/13 Walcott Avenue application is adjourned to January 10.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Continued review of application for special use permit, site plan approval and submission, Mirabou Inn and Spa at Holland Estates, 7 Craig House Lane, submitted by the, I may be mispronouncing, I apologize, Mirabou?
Mirbo.
Mirbo, okay.
Bo Bridges.
Companies, thank you. Thank you.
Yes, I'm Ed Kellogg, I'm a partner with Mirbo Beacon Inn and Spa, and we, in our last submission, we do not have a presentation, we were just going to show the site plan, so thankfully, we don't have one, but, because it really hasn't been anything new that was submitted, except for the comprehensive submittal that we put in a couple weeks ago. So, we've incorporated all of your comments, all of the consultant's comments in the last submission, and so there's really no new substantial information. I know the professionals had some comments, and I can address them right now, you know, very quickly. You know, John had a question about the cottages, the architectural design, and the only thing that will be different on the five cottages are colors. You know, the cottages remain the same. John Russo had a few very detailed comments, which Mike Bodendorf is working with him on, but most importantly is the Duchess County Department of Health. So, a couple of weeks ago, we had a meeting, you know, Mike and I, with their senior administration and the reviewing engineer. As a result of that, we made another submission next week, and we're collectively shooting for a mid-to-late sign-off from the Health Department, which is at warp speed for the Health Department, so, yeah, so we think we have a, we have a, you know, a good submission with them. Yeah, and I think Stark had a question that he wanted some input from the board. There's a no-left-hand-turn southbound sign that remains from when we had a split-left-hand-turn at our entranceway and going into the settlement, and we can either leave that, now it's a continuous double-left-hand-turn, and I think Stark wanted some direction from the board, and do you want the sign there, or do you want, you know, it doesn't really matter to us, but we can clean that up in whichever way you like, and we're almost ready to submit the actual construction documents for the highway improvements, so we can incorporate it in that.
Quick, before you start, just quickly around the board and on the sign, Jill.
Out there. Good luck.
Can we get Stark to give us the pros and cons, just so there'll be?
Yes, the comment is about the left turn prohibition at that driveway, which leads to me, leads me to assume, and also based on the previous responses from Colliers, that left turns southbound would be occurring at the southerly driveway, and that southerly driveway, both of those driveways are meant to act as one-way driveways, so one is kind of an egress driveway and one is an ingress driveway. So, if you move the, those left turn egress movements to that southerly driveway, the driveway's not wide enough. So, I think we need to address, you know, how vehicles are going to be turning south, left, southbound. I think the two-way left turn lane design that we proposed and you guys have incorporated will allow for the left turns to occur at that northerly driveway. I wanted to see if Colliers had another reason why they were doing it, if it's just hangover from the previous concept, and I think that addresses the concern, but I just don't want to have that driveway be prohibited for left turns, and then those vehicles go to the southerly driveway, and then there's nowhere for anybody to turn in coming north.
Okay, yeah.
Kind of cleared it up.
Yeah, I didn't realize.
It's not more of a discussion for the board, it was more of like, what's the sign there for?
Yeah, you know, we can incorporate that in the construction documents, if that's okay with you, and we'll, we'll figure it out, but-
Does Rich have anything he wants to add right now? This may address the whole thing.
I can just add, for sure, that was a carryover from the prior, prior concept plan, where we had two separate left turn lanes, one for southbound traffic going into the park, and one for northbound traffic into the site. That was where that no-left-turn prohibition came from, at that northern, that northern Settlement Park driveway. So, with the double, the two-way left turn lane, I do agree that I think that left turns could be accommodated at that, that northern driveway location, and we could probably remove that left turn restriction.
So, is your problem, Stark?
Yep.
That's it?
Probably, thanks.
Okay.
That's all we really had, but, you know, we appreciate all your time. We've been at this for eight months, and I know your professionals have been very responsive, you know, to our questions and our re-submissions, and I think in the last meeting, we left requesting that you adopt the resolution for site plan approval and special use permit and the subdivision, so it's really-
So, let's go around.
It's up to you.
So, I'm not clear on where we are with-
Hold on, start there now, I'm going to bring you-
Oh.
Yeah. John, where you?
All my previous comments have been addressed.
I have some minor cleanup comments with regards to the plans and some of the other documents I need to submit, as far as the stormwater maintenance agreement needs meant, that's all part of the resolution.
Okay. Stark, that solves your-
Yeah, all right.
Okay, perfect. Jennifer?
Yes, Randall?
Anything you see that's still remaining? I'm going around a little second.
No, you do have a draft resolution that was circulated to the board and to the applicant and posted online. There have been a couple of minor revisions made over the course of the day, as I've been receiving comments from, from your consultants and board members, but you do have a draft resolution in front of you that is ready for you to act upon with respect to subdivision, special permit, and site plan approval, as well as certificate of appropriateness.
Okay.
Okay.
Jill, do you have any comment?
Yeah, yeah, I remember, no, I read that. No comments, I'm okay with it.
Karen?
I have one question. I, I can, my computer's dead, so I can't, didn't have a chance to review. Was there any reference to, there was discussion about a public access trail by the creek? And if that could include it in the-
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that was my only final question, because I didn't, I didn't have a chance to review.
Okay.
Thank you.
No concerns, I've reviewed the draft.
Okay. Question for Jennifer, was there anything, I sent you one comment that was really just kind of a naive question about the language regarding the six-and-a-half-acre parcel and the wording that was, you know, this may be developed into additional cottages. Is there any, are there any specific things we have to be concerned about in terms of just how that's worded, whether, you know, what we anticipate, or what may happen, or-
Right, so this project is being developed in phases, right? We're reviewing the Phase 1 now, the resolution is with respect to Phase 1, but for SEACER purposes, it was important for us to review all the phases, both Phase 1 and Phase 2. So, your negative declaration that you issued back in October does analyze, at least conceptually, the impacts of Phase 2 in conjunction with Phase 1, and all of that is recited in your negative declaration. So, at this point, you are approving Phase 1. Phase 2, we don't know when that's going to happen, if it's going to happen. If and when it does come forward, it will be subject to review by this board pursuant to whatever zoning laws are in effect at that time, and the SEACER analysis will apply at that time as well. So, I did, in response to your comment, Len, I did add aware as clause to Page 2 of the resolution that speaks to all of that.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions or comments.
Jennifer, what would be, what would you recommend as the motion for this, respectively?
You can have a motion to adopt the resolution as presented.
Okay, can I have that motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
One thing you should be aware, just to answer the comment about the Greenway Trail, that's considered in Phase 2.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's not definitive yet, but it's-
Is it, I bet there's a reference to it in the documents.
Yes, on the, on the master plan, page 2.
It's on the plan also.
Sheet 2 is, it's shown as part of Phase 2.
No, yeah.
And a conceptual layout is shown.
So, we have a-
I'll just add, that is referenced in the resolution, as well, in that new paragraph that I added in response to Len's comment, that it is expected, based on the applicant's representations, that the future phase will include the construction of a Greenway Trail around the Fishkill Creek.
Okay, so we have a motion?
Motion.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure, you know, it's been eight months, and we appreciate everything. I also want to thank our professionals, they did a great job being responsive, and now we'll live with Bruce for the next two years.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to it.
Moving on to item number four, continued review of application for site plan approval and subdivision, lot merger, approval mixed-use commercial and residential, 393 Fishkill Avenue, 397 Fishkill Avenue, and 7 Conklin Street, submitted by 397 Fishkill Ad LLC. Just in time.
Too many adjournments.
Yes.
Hard to get this back busy again. I hear you might be joined by Mr. Jensen soon, so we'll extend it a little longer. Good evening. For the record, Taylor Palmer with the Law Firm of Cuddy and Fader, on behalf of the applicant. Tonight, I'm joined again by R.A. Segal, architect, Mike Bodendorf again playing Dan Kohler from Hudson Land Design, and Rich Dandea of Colliers Engineering. Our landscape designer is Deborah Adamson, she's not with us tonight, but she will be preparing a landscape plan that will be submitted to you for our next submission, responsible comments from Mr. Clark and others. As the acting chairman said, we are before you this evening in connection with the continued review of the subdivision lot merger plan and site plan approval, that's proposing to redevelop the property for a three-story mixed-use commercial multifamily residential building. Some, although they aren't with us this evening, Mr. Gunn, have referred to this as the postage stamp of Beacon. Now, again, REA is still gleaming based on that characterization, but the design of this was intended to reflect a lot of, you know, what is in the area, and that's, we're glad to see it had that initial feeling on the chairman, who's not with us this evening. At that November 9th meeting, the board did announce its intent to serve as lead agency for the SEACER review. That process is undergoing, or ongoing, because it was not circulated timely-
That process is undergoing, or ongoing, because it was not circulated timely, or not timely. It's not circulated in time for the board to make a determination as to lead agency this evening, so likely would be in position for that in January. We did submit a updated, as the board requested, full environmental assessment report. This is an unlisted action, it's not a type one action, unlisted action, but we did still submit a full EAF, which was also circulated on November 18th with the rest of materials in accordance with SECA. As detailed in our November 29th letter, we did revise, or provide the revised site plans and project refinements, so that included some reconfiguration of the rear parking to account for a refuse container in that location that maintains the parking spaces that we know, which is 34 off-street parking spaces, which is the requirement for the proposed development, adding a snow storage area. We've incorporated catch basins to, and pipes to discharge the existing system from the premises. And then we relocated some proposed benches in the front green space area closer to the picnic tables. Is Mike, Mike, well, I guess we'll have you give a quick update, you want to give a quick update on the erosion sediment control? No. We are also going to be coordinating a site visit, as Mr. Russo has mentioned, to locate all water, sewer, and gas connections for the existing buildings. And then we will also be submitting an INI study and report for the stormwater analysis and subdivision plat for the lot merger. As I mentioned previously, Ms. Adamson's is preparing a landscape plan and will be also coordinating a lighting plan. I know that was something that also came up in the comments. So at this time, there was another comment that Mr. Clark, I know he'll mention them in his comments this evening, that was a very interesting quirk in the code. We're a unique zoning district apparently in the GB that deals with an odd setback requirement, so we will be adjusting the building five feet as it relates to a front yard setback and a side yard. In this instance, the front yard setback is actually less than the side yard setback requirement, so it's the only one in the city. So we'll, we'll adjust the plan, and we'll take it from there. Those will be minor changes. We anticipate, based on initial workup from those comments, that it won't change the parking, or it may reduce the building size in limited components, but won't create any other triggers or variances, but that will be in our supplemental submission.
Okay, excellent. John?
First, let me say that I've been here six years, and this is the first new use in the GB district that I've seen. It's been a fairly stagnant district.
Yeah, I think it was also Fishkill, I think the Fishkill-Weber's development was GB, and then I think later became Fishkill Creek.
Yeah, well, that was before my time. So, anyway, it's interesting that the zoning changes that were put in place when the tables were done encouraged multiple uses on GB properties rather than just strip development sort of type uses. And this is the first instance in which somebody's come in and said, okay, we're going to do something different on Route 52, which I think is interesting. There is that quirk in the code in which, in most other districts, you, if you're on a corner lot, you get two front yards, and the GB district doesn't have that provision. And so they have to designate one as a side yard, and again, it's interesting that, for some reason, the side yard is bigger than the front yard. So this building will have to push back from probably...
Conklin.
Conklin, by five feet, which squeezes the building a bit. But to be compliant, that has to happen. The building inspector looked at it and ruled in what I suspected, that they have to have one side, one front yard instead of two. There's just, there's obviously some big things, the subdivision plat, the landscaping, the lighting, those things have to be completed, elevations for the buildings. I also suggested that they should look at fencing, because it is adjacent to residential properties. Not real close to adjacent residential, but still, I think parking lots should be fenced from residential properties. And I suggested a shift in the southernmost parking space, which didn't look like it was feasible to back out of.
Mr. Russo?
Mr. Taylor hit upon most of what I was going to be discussing. Thank you, Taylor.
Efficiency.
So, yes, basically, they need to submit an INI report. They're going to do a stormwater analysis. They're going to be doing some onsite exploratory with regards to soils and rock, because we know there are rock outcoppings on that site. The other plans will be forthcoming. I would like to get the plans coordinated between the architect and the engineer. The engineer's showing one thing, the architect is showing something completely different. Also, within the building itself, first floor, you know, typically, there would be a mechanical room. You're going to, more than likely, need a sprinkler system for that building, so you're going to have a fire sprinkler assembly in there, backflow prevention, everything. I didn't see a place for any of that within the building. I have a number of cleanup comments and other revisions that need to be done with the plans. But the other concern I had was with regards to the retaining wall. I know it stated that that wall could be eight feet high. I think we need to know what type of wall is being used. The concern would be, you know, if there's geo grid that needs to be installed within this wall system, how far back is it going to go? Are you going to encroach on neighboring parcels to actually install this wall, the grid, anything else?
Understood. And we, and by the way, before we had Mr. Clark's comment about the building adjustment, we had come up with and finalized our stormwater management and grading and all that had been packaged, so we were right there. And then we got a, we got a surprise, thanks to being the unique zoning district in the city. So we're adjusting that, but all of those are going to be incorporated. This supplemental submission will really dial down everything so that hopefully we can get to various, you know, formal comments about the project design, and hopeful that the board might be willing to share any comments this evening, just as far as what you've seen so far. And that way, we can try and put that into the package as we get it back to you for January.
Comments? Let's start on this side of the table.
I don't, I don't have any questions or comments right now.
The only minor thing that I was looking at was on the architect's site plan. There's some benches and tables, and it needs like some coordination with the grading, because with the way that the grading looks, doesn't look like that's going to work out.
And I imagine that may also be adjusted when Ms. Adamson's gets her final design, or at least the proposed design. I think those will all integrate.
Okay.
One comment that if there's, if there's a major problem, or if that additional setback from the anticipated setback on Conklin doesn't line up with other buildings or other things, you might look at zoning appeals board, if it makes sense. My other question was, just from the quick glance at the site, I realized that there's stone, there's ledge right there. It's basically, looks, appears to be rock, at least in the parking lot. And I am not sure, this is just a question, how stormwater would be managed in a situation like that, whether, like, structures would have to be...
That's what they have to do. So they're going to do some exploratory excavation on the site. They need to know exactly where it is, depths, and what they have to do. Because they're going to need to know that for the building itself.
Right.
Jill?
I had a question about the parking. So there's 12 apartment units, is that right? And three commercial units?
I'm going to prescribe them as units, but that's, yeah, that, yes, yes.
What is the parking requirement?
One of those will be a below-market rate unit as well, because pursuant to the code.
Okay. What's the required parking for that?
Thirty-four total is the...
That's what's required?
Thirty-three required, thirty-four is provided.
Uh huh, okay. It always just seems like so much parking.
Yeah, the report would show, I mean, there, these are shared uses too, so that the actual demand will not, I mean, that, I don't get to use that argument for the purposes of the parking count, but they are absolutely, would be shared, shared usage.
Yeah. And the three existing buildings on the three lots, those would be torn down presumably?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, how many units, living units are incorporated in those three buildings? Do you know?
Believe me, the answer was two.
Yeah, two.
Just two?
Yeah, there's nothing, there isn't, not a residence in the sunroom building, that's just a commercial space. I thought it was dual purpose, but we confirmed it's only two, and it's in the building.
The two family house, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, no other questions at this time?
Thank you.
Traffic code, site review?
Oh, I'm sorry, one other thing, of course. I bet you can guess what it's going to be.
Balconies?
Just, you know, I know the view over Fishkill Avenue is not necessarily that dramatic, but, you know, it's always nice to incorporate outside air. But they have to be inset, it doesn't work to have them just stuck on...
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm, thank you.
Start.
I think the only comment we had from a traffic standpoint that requires a look is, coincidentally, ironically, is a site distance with the landscaping plan that you guys are going to be developing. Just make sure there's nothing in the way that you're proposing along Fishkill Avenue.
Right. Makes sense.
There you go.
The only other thing I would say is include the site distance triangle at the corner there.
Okay.
That should help.
Yeah, that makes sense.
With that site distance.
Yeah, and just for the benefit of the board, we are coming in off Conklin, and we're moving the existing access points off of Fishkill Avenue.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all. We appreciate your time.
We're going to move on to miscellaneous business.
And I didn't get to ask for anything tonight. I can't say, can we open a public hearing? Thank you.
It's a Christmas miracle.
I think we got some work to do for that. Miscellaneous business, consider request for one 90-day extension of subdivision and site plan approval, Beacon Views Townhouse, 37 units, Conklin Street, submitted by Beacon Views LLC. I have a question.
Yes.
Is 90 days enough?
Ninety days is going to be a start. We have, we've submitted to the Army Corps of Engineers. That application is in process. I think the board has received some correspondence from DEC in response to the joint application that was filed. We are pursuing the other conditions of approval in parallel with the Army Corps. It is the applicant's intention to start construction shortly after the conditions are met in 2023, but we're at the mercy of the schedule in terms of our response from...
So, real quick, I'm going to go around the board, right? Because as opposed to them being back in 90 days, looking for another 90-day approval, I would suggest we do two 90 days. If they don't need the second one, you don't use it.
I don't have any objection to that.
No.
Can I have that motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You got two 90 days.
Perfect, thank you. For clarity, the 90-day extension is added to the current term of the expiration that was in the resolution, or from this night's meeting?
Jennifer, how's that work?
Not from tonight's meeting, it would be from the date that your current extension expires.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second?